It's five o'clock, so I'd like to, for everyone to take a seat and then we'll call the meeting to order. Hello, I'm Janet Watson. I'm chairman of the Planning Commission. This is the March 22nd meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville. And we appreciate everyone being here tonight to help us get this done. And first we'll have, after we have adoption of the minutes, we'll have the public hearings at which time we'll call upon members of the audience. If you have something to, that you want to speak about on one of the items on the public hearing agenda, then you may take one of microphones at either side of the room and give your name and address for the record and tell us your concerns about that item. I'd like to ask everyone, the other Planning Commission members, to introduce themselves and we'll start down here with Ms. Laurie.
LaFrida Jordan.
Carlos Matthews.
Sally Warden.
Donna Hendricks.
Gary Whitley.
Les Tillery.
Peggy Richard.
Kyle Collins.
Jeffrey Rice.
Michelle Jordan, Planning Director.
We have Claudia Anderson, City Attorney, in the back, who will make sure that we follow the rules and regulations. Our first item of business is the adoption of the minutes from February 23rd.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next agenda item is public hearings. First item is Barnes subdivision and I understand it has been withdrawn. We do have a comment, a letter commenting on that from Mr. John Corey of 1613 Drake Avenue Southeast Huntsville, Alabama. Mr. Corey states that he's concerned about excessive rainfall runoff. And we're just going to ask that this letter be entered into the record. I'm going to pass it, maybe you all have a copy. So we'll just enter this into the record. Is there anyone else here who came specifically to comment on Barnes subdivision? We will leave that public hearing open because it has been withdrawn and proceed to the next item, which is Beasley Properties, a minor. Is there anyone here to comment on Beasley? Oh, you weren't just present that to us first, Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. Beasley Properties is located northwest city, west of Providence Main Street and south of Highway 72. This property is Zone C4 and is approximately 6.01 acres. This item is before you for an angle of side lot line between lots one and two. Depicted here is the two lots in question and the lot line is being adjusted just right at the bend of the rear of that property. And this property before you, again, before you for the angle of side lot line.
Is there anyone here to comment on Beasley Properties? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Bradford Creek subdivision, a minor.
Bradford Creek subdivision is located northwest city, south of 72 West and east of County Line Road. This property is Zone C4 and is approximately 24.09 acres. This item again is before you, before you for an angle of side lot line between lots one and two. Lot one will consist of 18.66 acres. Lot two against County Line Road is approximately 3.28 acres. And lot three out parcel along 72 West is 2.16 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Bradford Creek subdivision? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Green Mountain Auction Property, a re-subdivision of lot two of a re-subdivision of track 13, a minor.
Green Mountain Auction Property, re-sub of lot two of a re-sub of lot of track 13 is located southeast city, west of South Shawdee Drive and south of Nature's Trail Drive. This item is Zoned R1 and also has some sub-development district on it. The entire property is 245.48 acres. Lot one will be carved out, which is approximately 1.4 acres and the additional 244 acres will be subdivided. This item is again, is before you for a non-radio lot line between lots one and two and an angle of side lot line between lots one and two.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Green Mountain Auction Property?
The two lots that's being created, this is here where my cursor is. This is lot one, which is approximately the 1.4 acres here. And the additional 244 acres was just recently announced to be acquired by the land trust. So this land will essentially be protected and this one acre will be carved out for a future residential lot. Or 1.4 acres will be carved out for a future residential lot.
Is there any further comment on the Green Mountain Auction Property? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Providence Phase Nine.
Providence Phase Nine is located in northwest city, north of US Highway 72 West and west of Providence Main Street. This item is before you for a relay out of 403 lots and for a preliminary of 52 lots. This item is a PUD of the Providence Development. It is of Transact Four, which is their residential development and is approximately 10.86 acres of the 52 preliminary lots.
Is there anyone here to comment on Providence Phase Nine? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Retreat at Goose Creek and that's been withdrawn. However, if there's anyone who came tonight to make comment, I'll call upon you now to do that. Okay, we'll leave that item open in case it comes back. It's withdrawn for tonight. Our next item is Taylor-Wen Commercial Subdivision, a minor.
Taylor-Wen Commercial Subdivision is located northwest city, south of US 72 West and, well, actually University Drive and east of Wind Drive. This property is before you for easement along, well, waiver of the easement along the east side of lot one and the south boundary of lot two as noted on the plat. Again, this item is Zone C4 and is approximately 3.35 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Taylor-Wen Commercial Subdivision? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next section is zoning. Item A is zoning ordinance amendment on funeral homes. Are you going to do that presentation, Thomas?
Ashley will.
Ashley, okay. Thank you, Thomas.
This proposed ordinance amendment is to add mortuaries, funeral homes, and crematories into the Commercial Industrial Park District. It's Article 44 within our City of Huntsville zoning ordinance. Currently, we only have three districts that permit these particular uses. They're permitted in our highway business C4 district, which is commonly found along US 72 West and also University Drive. We also have a small pocket of C4 in the Jones Valley area as well as on Sparkman Drive. And also our light and heavy industry districts, which are commonly found along North and South Parkway. In parentheses, I have the years in which these particular uses were added to the respective districts. For light industry, there are two years that are listed and I did a little background research to find out why there were, it was permitted and deleted and then permitted again prior to the recreation of the General Business C3 district, which is our downtown. Funeral homes and mortuaries and crematories, that they were all included as a permitted use under General Business C3, starting in 1963. And at the time, light industry referenced C3 and no other district. When C3 was rewritten in 2007, it inadvertently omitted funeral homes from being allowed in our light and heavy industry districts since they used C3 previously as a reference. So that it was added as a specific permitted use under light industry in 2010 and heavy industry now only references light industry. There was some confusion with a couple of business owners wanting to locate under the light industry districts and that omission was caught in 2010. So that's why it has been added into the zoning ordinance twice.
Is there anyone here to comment on the zoning ordinance amendment funeral homes? Yes, Ms. Reed, would you give us your name and address?
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive. What area is this? Commercial and industrial park, where is that?
Ashlynn, would you?
Let's see if I can highlight it on here, maybe not.
She's going to bring it up for you to show you.
Okay.
I'll just zoom into some areas. Ms. Reed, are you familiar with the Space Gate Industrial Park located on 53, Highway 53?
No.
Well, it's more so going northwest out into the county area. We have some CIP in this area as well as in the Plummer Road area. We have some CIP scattered as well, as long as, as well as some light industry. We also have more located along Stringfield and also in the Maston Lake area. Also along North Parkway, there's also some existing CIP, which has been existing since the annexation of certain properties. So it's kind of scattered more so at our north portions of town. Also in the Wind Drive area, near University Drive and near Oakwood College, we have some as well.
What's that purple?
The purple, the purple area here, this is the Commercial Industrial Park. This is the proposed district we would like to add this particular use.
One question, is Cummins Research Park in any of this?
No, ma'am, it is not.
That helps, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there any other comment on funeral, the funeral home zoning ordinance amendment? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Item B is Taylor rezoning.
This property is approximately .75 acres. It's located north of Holmes Avenue. This property is currently Zoned Residence 2A. This is the original zoning of this property and it has not changed since the property was zoned in 1963. Next door to this property is a fairly new Dollar General store. This pocket of C1 has been existing since 1963 as well as the other pockets along Holmes Avenue. Prior, this property currently is vacant, but prior to the demolition of the previous building, this property was an accounting firm and prior to that, it was some other type of home occupation type business. And the property owner wanted to petition to request this property be rezoned from R2A to neighborhood business C1, which is consistent with the adjacent property. And it's also consistent with the prior uses. There have been no variances. There have been some variance requests on this property, but as far as the two previous uses, there are no existing variances on the property. So I guess it just kind of was placed there and since the use was similar, it never changed. But this property only will accommodate currently a single family or some type of multifamily and the property owner would like to have an additional option for uses for redevelopment.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Taylor rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is C Willowbrook rezoning.
This property is currently zoned Residence 2A. This was previously a platted subdivision. The subdivision no longer was going to be developed, so it was purchased by Willowbrook Church. Willowbrook would like to rezon the property from Residence 2 to Residence 2A so that they may develop their church as well as they have an interested party in possibly developing some type of multifamily dwellings in the front of the property. This property is on the west side of Jeff Road and south of Capshaw Road.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Willowbrook rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Ashley. Our next item of business is subdivision committee report. Les Tillery, won't you give us the subdivision? Pardon? Oh, your zoning. No, Kyle, I'm sorry. Kyle Collins, would you give us the subdivision committee report?
Yes, I will, thank you. A subdivision committee met on March 16th. And the following are the items and our recommendations. Item number one is Beasley Properties. The committee recommends layout approval with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is Bradford Creek subdivision, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line, track one and track two.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is Green Mountain Auction Property, a re-subdivision of lot two of a re-subdivision of track 13, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval of two lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots one and two and the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, yes. Just for the record, we've all dealt with Green Mountain and concerns there. If I'm to understand correctly, this one lot will be a development home or whatever and then the rest of this is being auctioned, given to the land trust for natural aesthetic, green, whatever, won't be developed?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for a final approval on the two lots.
Is it in order for final, Michelle?
Yes, it's in order.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four is Plantation Park Phase One, re-subdivision of Carriage Station. Presented for final approval on 35 lots.
Second.
Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order with improvements to be installed by March 18th, 2017 and with sidewalks to be installed by March 19th, 2017.
Move to approve? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Preserve at Inspiration, re-subdivision of Track 6A of Green Mountain Auction Property is presented for final approval on 45 lots.
Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order with improvements and sidewalks to be installed by March 7th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Thomas, can you show where these two, this, this item and item four, are they, they're not next, no, I'm sorry, item three, they're not?
Plantation Parks and Inspiration are the two items you're speaking of?
Correct.
I did not receive the final plat. I do have a final plat exam, but I don't have a digital PDF of such. We do have the properties. This is the item in question currently, Inspiration, Preserve at Inspiration. This item was before you last year for subdivision has been built out. It is in order for final approval. It is located southwest, southeast city on Green Mountain, south of Shawdee or east of Shawdee, south Shawdee?
And so where is it located in relation to item three?
Opposite direction of town. The item three is Plantation Park is located northwest city, south of Nick Davis and?
No, 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 the Green Mountain Auction Property, the minor, two lots.
Give me one second and I can show you a depiction through what we have here on Google Earth. It's one lot in between. If I can get to the property, here we go. Okay. So what you see here is on this R1A development is the Preserve at Inspiration. There's one lot in between and that preserved area is here where my cursor is. So there's essentially a large piece of acreage in between that cannot be developed due to slope and also some archaeological sites on this property south of Preserve. And this property has been acquired to be preserved through the land trust.
So the R1A, the smaller portion, that's, this is item five?
Correct. Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor of final approval, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, Providence Phase Nine. The committee recommends layout approval on 403 lots and preliminary approval on 52 lots.
Second.
This is for layout approval and preliminary approval. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven, Taylor-Wen Commercial Subdivision, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on easements along the east side of lot one and the south boundary of lot two as noted on the plat.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor of layout approval, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, it's in order.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor of final, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much, Kyle.
Thank you.
Okay, Les, would you do subdivision report now?
Yes, ma'am. The zoning committee met on March?
I'm sorry, zoning, I said it wrong. Zoning.
Zoning, we're doing zoning now. Zoning committee met on March 9th and these are our recommendations. Item one, zoning ordinance amendment funeral homes. Amends Article 44, Commercial Industrial Park District Regulations, Section 44.1. Uses permitted to add mortuaries, funeral homes and crematoriums. Public hearing was held this evening.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question. What was the origin of why we're doing this?
Planning staff, over I guess the past six months, we've been getting a lot of calls regarding funeral homes. Apparently this is a, definitely a need and we've had a lot of interested, I guess, residents in wanting to have funeral homes. But the cost of the property, also the availability of property located in the C4 districts as well as light and heavy industries is either pretty limited on the particular sizes or space that they need, or it's too much, or the price is a bit more. As we all know, those are pretty much our top three districts in town for as far as pricing is concerned, for commercial property. So planning staff, we've sat down and tried to look through all of our districts to see what we may have a little more of. Is it even accessible? Are they located near major arterials? Is it something that would even be feasible for that particular district? So we felt CIP would be a good district that we could recommend to add this as a permitted use. Currently, we have five operating funeral homes in the city limits with the exception of one crematory type institution, which is operated by Huntsville Hospital. It's actually in Research Park applications. Two of those are permitted by variance and they have been existing since the 1970s, 171 and 11972. Also, excuse me, 72 and 77. Also, we have three additional that are in their correct district and they operate by rights and they are located within our light and heavy industry districts. So we don't have any existing in C4, but we do in light and heavy and in our neighborhood business districts and one residential district by variance only. Within the past year, we've received four official zoning applications for a variance. All of those were denied. There was one application that was submitted within the last month and it was approved at last week's meeting. And it is in a neighborhood business C1 district, which we do have one existing on Oakwood Avenue, which is in our neighborhood business C2 district. That's our oldest case that was granted in 1972. There was one prior that was existing since 1971 and it is no longer in business.
Real quickly, CIP, you denoted a couple of those down at Space Gate and north of city. Is CIP also out east in like Chase?
I think we do have a few pockets in Chase. Most of Chase, I think it's planned industrial. Yes. The blue area you see here, which is most of Chase that is planned industrial and Alabama A&amp;M is Zoned Resident, excuse me, is Zoned Research Park, which all of our universities and institutions are under our Research Park designation. We do also have some out west near the Target Distribution Center. Also Polaris out in this limestone county cluster as well.
What about Jetplex, is that CIP?
We have some Airport Industrial Park there, which that's our only pocket. We also have some planned industrial and just one space, which is located here at Wall Trianna, that's CIP. Everything else is primarily, we have more planned industrial, I think, space out of all of the other additional industries than we do CIP.
Okay, thank you. What are some other uses in CIP?
CIP, you can have warehousing with some type of office component. You can have manufacturing. We do have some landscaping companies there. You can have like an auto wrecker there. We have several uses and I will pull those up for you guys so you can just have a synopsis of some of those uses.
Why are you looking that up? Did I hear you correctly say that there's CIP on Wind Drive?
Yes, the area where, I know the Army Corps of Engineers has an office located there and it's actually been there since the 70s, 80-ish range. This cluster is all Zoned CIP and that's the original zoning of that area.
So it's not the side where?
So it's not the side where Chick-fil-A and all that?
No, that's, uh, highway business C-four.
Okay.
So we won't take your Chick-fil-A away. And put a funeral home there. Okay, so here are some of the uses that we permit under, um, CIP. Correctional facilities, this was added, I think, back in two thousand ten. It's one of the newest uses along with farmers markets. You can also have any type of governmental use, they can go in any district. Also, mobile foods, hotels, office buildings, you can have firing ranges, you can have, um, warehousing, wholesaling, as long as there's some type of manufacturing assembly or office component, also light manufacturing. Um, you can also have certain recreational facilities that, um, basically are an accessory of an existing CIP use. Um, and there are other, um, uses that are listed as special exceptions. In order to go in this district as a special exception, they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment and I think an indoor firing range and a couple of other uses are uses that are permitted under this, uh, particular district just because they didn't fit, um, within the regulations under our light and heavy industry districts. As a lot of those abut residential uses. So as they added uses over the years, um, more things have kind of expanded into CIP in other districts that don't necessarily abut residential districts.
Are, are there any further comments on the funeral home?
Ma'am Chair, I would like to, um, ask a few questions. I'm still concerned, as I mentioned in committee, regarding the performance standards for, uh, CIP. And while we are considering this as an option for this type of business, due to the fact that we're hearing that C-four property is expensive, the additional, uh, financial requirements for the, to meet the performance standards may also be unduly burdensome. So how do we decide which one, which burden is better on the business?
All.
In, in my opinion, that would, uh, fall to market, the market forces. They would need, make a business decision as to whether or not it was cheaper to go buy a lot in C-four or to meet the performance standards in CIP. It would be, it would be the property developer who wants to build a crematorium.
So for this one particular use, we're going to make, um, exception so that property, they can buy cheaper property. Will that then become established precedent for other businesses that, that have the same case? That property is too expensive in certain areas and I want cheaper property? Do, do you set a bad precedent by doing that? Tonight, just tonight only, we, we've, we've reviewed three op, three, uh, items that were in C-four. So that tells me that, that there is C-four property available and that someone's willing to buy it.
I think what we're doing more importantly is creating less barrier for entry. We're not, we're not establishing a precedent for an easier, cheaper use. What we're doing is allowing this use to have more opportunity. Uh, within CIP, we allow any retail sale and service. It's an extremely broad use category. It's the broadest use category we have, which is also in light and heavy industry. CIP has the same use. So I think what we're more importantly doing is just allowing this use more opportunity in more areas. I think that's what we need to look at specifically.
Should we consider removing the performance standards then from Article forty-four?
I think the performance standards will manage themselves within the industry. I think the market will do that on its own as, as less stated. I think that's more of a, a private sector concern than a, than the zoning one is concerned.
Ashley, can you show if, um, there's any CIP located? We've, I know we looked at the east, is there any to the west and to the south?
Um, there's not much to the south. Um, there's only one pocket, excuse me, near the airport area. This is five sixty-five and Waltryanna, the purple fuchsia color that's shaded here, that's CIP. The rest of this area is some other type of industrial park or older light industry, which is existing from, um, the original zoning. We're not zoning anything light or heavy industry, so what's existing will remain. Um, and we have had several of those pockets, uh, be rezoned into other, uh, districts, such as some of our residential districts. And also, we have some more CIP along County Line Road, um, more out in the Polaris area, which this is one of our newest pockets. This Proctor property was recently annexed and zoned last year. Um, you also have, um, CIP where the new GE plant, um, will be located also. This area south here is also CIP. Most of our CIP, uh, is more so either located along the Madison Boulevard area or it's clustered in the north center of town. The only CIP we have existing that does abut a residential district is this portion, uh, which is kind of south of the Providence area. This West Park, uh, area. This is the original zoning of this area and you have the midtown on the park, um, residential subdivision behind it. And then you have Research Park west to the south. But the majority is within this northern cluster and always has been. Um, we have your area here on Wind Drive. You have your areas here north of Plummer and also, um, fifty-three and Stringfield. You have some south of Stringfield. This pocket on, uh, Maston Lake was rezoned from C-four, um, to CIP back in, uh, or excuse me, this portion of C-four was rezoned from CIP back in two thousand twelve. There was actually a proposed funeral home that was to go in this portion and that funeral home never did materialize. So basically, we have a strip of C-four that's kind of just there, it's available. Um, but, um, it was rezoned for this particular use and it just never, um, materialized. Also, um, here's another pocket near Stringfield and, um, Pulaski.
So opening these floodgates, uh, for CIP for this permitted use, what protections would we have to ensure that, you know, this type of business doesn't go next door to Polaris or, uh, some of the other locations that Kyle mentioned earlier?
Well, I don't think they would have any protection as far as what uses can locate next to each other. Um, our zoning ordinance basically identifies a list of permitted uses. And if you can go within that district, you're allowed to relocate wherever your business feels it's feasible for you to go and you have a site plan that adequately meets our zoning as well as our subdivision regulations.
Oh. Are you concerned about the, the appearance as, as opposed to next to?
The, I'm concerned about the appearance and then possibly locating, uh, next to other industries that may, you know, that may become a problem for, you know, selling properties or building or attracting or leasing, uh, in, in buildings and that kind of thing.
You're thinking they wouldn't like funeral homes?
Yes.
Well, most people do like funeral homes.
I think you're...
You're just young.
Your assumption there is a funeral home is a, is a bad thing, but...
No, I, I think it's a very necessary business. I'm just concerned that since we already have three other districts that would allow this, that is there really truly a need to add another district?
We're also, uh, so, I'm sorry, uh, Chair. Um, also, one thing planning staff is looking to do, um, and we, and you probably noticed over the past year from our million, uh, zoning ordinance amendments that we've had before you all. We're greatly trying to reduce the workload that is on our Board of Zoning Adjustment. They have so many tedious, um, applications and things that over the years, they're just repeats of repeats of repeats. And we're just basically trying to think ahead of things that we can update in our zoning ordinance to reduce their load. We only have a, a small zoning administration staff and they're constantly overloaded with a lot of requests. And several of these people I've spoken with and I've told them, we can't rezone your property to this or to that. So their only option is to go request a variance. Well, if you're getting three, four, ten variance requests for the same particular use, there may be a need to add this use or have another, uh, zoning district that this, uh, particular use can locate within. So we're just trying to be accommodating as well as reduce the load of our other division.
I think you said there'd been three to four.
There have been four. Um, two of those, well, five, including last week, uh, three of those have gone to Circuit Court and I think they are in the process of being dismissed. One person has left the area altogether. I think they intend on opening their business in Tennessee across the state line. Um, one person recently received a variance and I'm not sure what happened with the other case.
Oh, it seems to me that if we, if we're having that many variance requests, that we don't have enough, uh, designated areas, zoned areas, that, uh, a business that is a, a necessity and, and, um, provides, uh, uh, services that are necessary to the community as well as individuals, um, uh, we need to be able to accommodate them in, in other districts. If, for whatever reason, they're not able to go within the zone districts that they're allowed in now. If, if they're, you know, the, the, um, uh, surroundings aren't such that they feel like it's, uh, conducive to, um, people coming at night for visitation and things like that, so, uh, which might be the case in the industrial zoning, light industry or heavy industry. Any, anything, any other discussion? Um, I believe we have a motion. Um, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Um, motion carries.
The second item is the Taylor rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve?
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, Taylor rezoning? Well, public hearings closed.
I continue?
Um, are, are you here for the Taylor rezoning?
Yes.
Uh, ma'am, the public hearing's already closed, but we will take your comments. Uh, we can go ahead and take your comments, but, uh, the public hearing was the first part of the agenda and I don't know if you were here.
I was here, but I didn't understand it.
Okay. Well, go ahead and give us, we'll try to answer any questions you have.
I just actually have some questions that I, that I, you know, I'd like some answers to. Can you, will you be able to do that tonight?
Well, we'll do our best. Just go ahead and, and give us your name and address.
Okay.
Laura. The, I, I will specify that this is, this is not within the order of our meeting, but we're doing it, it's a courtesy to, um, to hear your comments and try to answer your questions. Uh, put, put your name and address, please.
Laura Ashford.
And your address?
Twenty-seven eleven Barbara Drive, Huntsville, Alabama.
Thank you. Um, and, and do you have some comments?
No, I just needed some, have some questions that I would like answered. Would y'all be able to do that to, tonight? Or do I?
We'll try.
Do I need to come at another time?
No, right now, just, you go ahead and ask us.
Oh, okay. I was, I was wondering about, uh, uh, Holmes Avenue. Uh, there, there's a section that y'all gonna do for, uh, commercial. Uh, what does that include? Where, where does the, where it starts and where it ends on Holmes Avenue?
Can you pull that up, Ashley?
Yes, ma'am. Um, it's the area that's highlighted here in, um, red. It's just this single parcel. Um, this rezoning request was a petition by the actual property owner to rezone their property only. So this won't, um, affect the remaining portions of Holmes Avenue, only this parcel only. Um, and with, uh, this C-one portion, you could see similar uses, uh, similar to, um, you could have a small apparel store, you can have a grocery store there. Um, it's, it's a variety of uses that are there that would only affect this particular parcel. And there is also, um, landscaping requirements that would be required for, uh, this property. So there would be some type of buffer to the adjacent residential properties as well.
Okay, so it, it, it'll stop at, whatever, whatever y'all gonna, uh, resign the stock right at that area, right?
Yes, ma'am.
You gonna go, uh, like, down, down the road a little piece further?
No, ma'am, it's only for this property only. And west, immediately west of this property, this is the Dollar General, um, next to the Selden Center. This area is already zoned, Neighborhood Business C-one district, and that's the original zoning of this area. This property is zoned residential, which is adjacent, which is consistent with your zoning and also the other homes in the neighborhood. And this property has never been a, uh, residential use. It was always some type of, uh, home occupation or, um, office or some type of commercial use. So that was the reason for requesting, um, this rezoning change by the property owner.
Okay, and that was, that was my question.
Okay.
Let's see. Barbara.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ashford.
Will I show her where her street is?
There she is. Okay. And you're in here, ma'am, right? This is Barbara Street, so you're in this cluster back here. It will only affect this pocket right on Holmes Avenue and, and not your property.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a, um, motion and a second on Taylor Road rezoning. Is there any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is the Willowbrook rezoning. Public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
One quick question.
Yes.
Different, it's going from R-two to R-two A, is that correct?
Yes.
What, what are the, just a summary of what are the differences?
Um, R-two will accommodate single family as well as some two-family dwellings. It does not accommodate any, uh, multifamily such as a, your traditional apartment complex. Those typically are found in our R-two A and R-two B districts and the difference is the density. Um, typically, R-two A will accommodate two-story apartment units, whereas, uh, R-two B will accommodate three-story.
Madam Chair, I have a conflict on this item, I need to recuse.
Thank you very much. Note it for the record. Um... Any dis, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is the Butler rezoning. Uh, the committee recommends the planning commission set a public hearing for April the twenty-sixth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is Redstone Two rezoning. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for April twenty-sixth.
Any discussion?
Madam, Madam Chair, the, for clarification, the motion is to set a pub, um, set a public hearing, not to approve?
Oh, okay. Okay. Motion to set a public hearing for April twenty-second, moved in second.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
And, um, uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, our next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Michelle Jordan, would you?
Yes. Okay. Could you give us the invocation?
Yes. Staff recommends the invocation of items one through fourteen.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, is there any further business? There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.